We call the November 26, 2018, a school board meeting to order. Ask that everybody rise. We'll say the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the light of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. So this is the part of the meeting that's reserved for public comment. See a lot of public out there. April.
I don't really count. I'm the only staff person here tonight. I think that is not part of the schedule. But I am here on behalf of the Grafton Education Foundation, just to give you a update. Our Seeds to Harvest campaign that we run every year is on pace to meet numbers that we've had previously, which is good news. We had quite a big coming in recently, and we're thinking because it's end of the year, we should expect more in summer. Many went to the musicals and noticed the new microphones and the new sound, and we're really excited about that project. And then we'd like to thank the board for your donation for our auction for Super Bowl, which is January 26th. If it's not already out of your calendar. And reverse raffle tickets are now on sale. Anybody in the duty of the selling them? I have some to sell. If you are interested, you can let me know. That's it.
Thank you very much, April, for the update and for the continued good work that the foundation does on behalf of the district. Anything else? If not, then we'll move on to the consent agenda items. We have the approval of the minutes from October 22nd and a statement of receipts and expenditures. Motion.
Motion to approve minutes and receipt of expenditures.
The second.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, passes. Action items. Jeff, the superintendent's report.
Yes, so a reminder that the spring school board election will be coming up on April 2nd. So if anyone in the community is interested in running for the school board, the candidacy filing deadline is Wednesday, January 2nd at 5:00 p.m. And we do have two board members that are up for reelection, and if they choose not to run for reelection, the non-candidacy papers must be turned in by December 21st at 5:00 p.m. I know Carrie gave those papers to those board members tonight. We want to make sure the public is aware of that, and we have some information in the office regarding that, that people are interested in coming in. So that's an important thing coming up. Fortunately, we have a great school board now, and hopefully we have everyone running for reelection. But we'll find out by December 21st at 5:00 p.m. Or earlier, maybe. It goes with it. And then we have a couple other items, but we also have our -- congratulations to our Grafton High School athletes for their fall seasons and some of their state accomplishments. I've asked Mr. Manti as high school principal to cover some of those students' names for us.
Yes, very successful fall athletic season for Grafton High School athletes. The athletes that we will highlight for you tonight are athletes that competed in state competitions throughout the state level in the fall. And we'd like to congratulate them on their achievements. First, for the boys cross-country team, which finished 10th place as a team at the state tournament, were led by top finisher Xander LaHosek. They finished 8th place. And other team members include Kale Abad, Nathan Baker, Hunter Bartelt, Jake Kepka, Sam Peters, and Thomas Volkman. So congratulations to boys cross-country on an outstanding season once again. The girls, also very successful, made two states again as they did last year. And they finished 12th as a team, were led by their top finisher Julia Willie in 29th place overall. And other team members included Natalie Shirella, Anna Eifert, Elise Luick, Ava Peterson, Morgan Rona, and Maddie Willie. So congratulations to all of those young ladies for their hard work this fall. Last, but certainly not least, our girls swim team also competed at the state level and finished 24th place as a team. Individual competitors were Sophia Skolman, 5th place in dive. Congratulations. Olivia Konzen, 12th place in the 50 freestyle, and 16th place in the 100 freestyle. And the 200 freestyle relay of Alison Gorkhars, Grace Hong, Olivia Konzen, and Elaine Prayfrock took 15th place. So proud of our swimmers, proud of all of our fall athletes and for their success at the state level this fall. Thank you.
Thanks, Scott.
Mr. Manti, and then a couple other items. I'd also like to extend my congratulations to the cast and crew of the GHS musical, the Drowsy Chaparron that ran the week before Thanksgiving. I'll echo, I did my notes too, to echo the sound system, and that's the first event I've been to with the new system. And there's definitely a difference from what I'd heard last year and to this year. So congratulations to Miss Condon and the whole crew. Just a lot of talent on display during that musical, and it's great to see a great turnout. I was there on that Sunday, and there was still, there was a ton of people in the auditorium on that Sunday, and you were there as well, Joe, and Steve were there on that day. And it was really just a great musical, great performance. Really forward to seeing them again as they move forward, but it was, just want to make sure we recognize them in that way. And then also, as we prepare to bring a 2019-2020 school calendar to the board, we've sent out some surveys to both our staff and to our parents. Surveys are running through tomorrow, so if someone hasn't taken the survey, they have to through tomorrow to take it. As of today, we had 127 staff responses and 184 parent responses to those. One of the questions I did ask in the survey was regarding using John Long as a polling site and if we should be having school either at a midterm or a presidential election cycle. You know, I know the staff does a really nice job of keeping the gym separate from the rest of the school, but there is still a lot of traffic that comes in. Kids are at recess, and so the police are there. They do a great job being visible, but it is a, it's a question that we asked. I did have a number of people, both staff and parents, who asked why we continue to have, they were questioning why do we have one of our schools as a polling site? So I did reach out to other, the other four districts in Ozaki County. We are the only district that does have a school being used as a polling site, so we're unique in that way. But that creates a scheduling piece as we look at our calendar if we were to take one of those days off. So when we get that, once the survey closes, we'll share the survey results with the board. What we'll be looking at as administrative team on Wednesday during our district meeting as we look at our calendars and we have some options for that. So we've taken the responses that we've had from staff and parents as we look to bring something forward to the board later next month, and then for a final approval in January. And then on Wednesday, November 7th, Carl Hader and students in a systems repair class hosted our first annual gearing up for winter event. It's an opportunity for senior citizens and handicapped drivers to come in and have their car checked free before winter. Students would, they checked windshield wipers, batteries, belts, tire pressure, and tire tread, as well as topped off some fluids. It was great, it was interesting seeing the kids interact with the adults as they came in and then helping them and then giving them some feedback on, you know, how their batteries were, their tires, or whatever it may be, or here's an idea for taking it somewhere for service, or you're in a great spot as we head into winter. And I talked to Carl afterwards, and he'd said it was a really great experience for the kids as well. Some of the kids really shown because they're currently working in jobs where they're interacting with people like that, where the people, other students, it was their first interaction with a customer. And even though you aren't getting money, it was still a customer, and so a really great experience for them. And Carl did a really nice job of welcoming people, talking to people, and even one of the ladies who'd come in had worked with, I believe, his dad. And so it was a small world in that way. So a great job to them and kudos to them and their work in that situation. So, and that concludes the superintendent's report.
All right, thanks, Jeff. Any questions? All right, let's move on to the committee reports. We had a curriculum committee and a policy committee meeting on November 12th. So Carrie, the curriculum committee.
Curriculum committee met on November 12th. One of the items was the high school schedule, which we will have later on the agenda. I think it's D. We also went over the graduation requirements, which is item...
G.
D. And it was the recommendation of the committee to go ahead and approve them. So that would be our recommendation to the full board is to go ahead and, we will be recommending to approve the change in the graduation requirements. We then had a nice presentation on the teaching and learning plan for up through 2020, focusing on the power standards and learning targets, conformative assessments, and using this data to then impact instruction. And then we had an update on the 100-day plan.
Thank you. Any questions for Carrie from the curriculum committee?
Steve, the policy committee. We all seem better than her. Yes, we also met on November 12th. We had four agenda items. We had a first reading of the Neola Policy Series 000, which is the administration, Series 1000 and 9000. So spent a good hour going through all of those, just minimal changes, which is some things that we noticed, talked through a lot of them. Jeff had a couple actions to go back and just get some clarification on. We'll have a second reading of those three series on December 10th, and we will also go through Series 3000 on December 10th. The last agenda item that we had was, again, a review of policy, 830, public use of facilities. We're just going back on that, and we hope to have that also discussed again on December 10th to bring that to the board on the 17th.
Thank you, Steve. Any questions?
Just one more thing to add. Fall is, the administration has also gone through with Neola Series 4000 too, so that is also now ready for us, but we're only going to do 3000 in December, 4000 in January.
So making good progress.
We are on track. We are halfway through, and we are on track. That was one of the concerns the board had would be to be able to stay on track, and we've done our work before the meetings, and so we're able to stay, staying on track.
Good. And then your next meeting is the 11th, correct?
That's correct.
Great.
All right, thanks, Steve. Personnel report. Jeff, is that you?
It is. We have no, nothing for approval, but we do have some informational items. We have both Linda Blank, a special ed aide at Kennedy Elementary School, and Christine Sandoval, a special ed aide at John Long Middle School, that have resigned, so we thank them for their service and intercoming the board of their resignations.
Thanks for that update. Item D, Grafton High School schedule change.
Yes, and this is what we have the crowd for tonight. Luckily, we recognize a lot of you, so that's good. Public comment, you know, wondering who's going to come forward. So Mr. Manti and his team have been working over the last year, and he'll go through the process that they followed. He has a number of people here to talk about that, so it's been a very inclusive process that has involved a ton of stakeholders, whether it's teachers, also students, that have also been involved in that, that done surveys and so forth, so he'll walk us through that.
Absolutely. So we're very excited to be here in front of the full board tonight after presenting to the curriculum committee on Monday, November 12th, and presenting with one of our committee members, Tracy Brogman, and answering some questions of the board at that time. But what we want to do for you tonight is to outline the schedule change process that has been underway for the last year. So we've been at this for about 12 months. We have a dedicated group of faculty members that are here tonight that have given countless hours toward this project, and that really is what has led to the recommendation, you know, being put forth to the board tonight. So what we're going to do is we're going to go through the presentation, and I have our curriculum committee members who will, our scheduling committee members who will help us through that presentation as well, and certainly we have time at the end to ask any questions as well. So wanted to begin with, just going with the board, why did we form this committee? So I would start with the why in terms of our process, and, you know, over the four, the first, you know, two to three years that I'd been the principal at Grafton High School, some frequent comments and frequent questions surfaced many times with parents and students, and a lot of those comments I heard over and over again. So I can't fit blank into my schedule. I'd really like to explore this as an elective, but I don't have space in my schedule. As a freshman, I have to take zero hour in order to take blank. So lots of those different conversations led to the creation and forming of the GHS Scheduling Committee. Committee representation, very important to point out, everybody that was involved in this committee process, and I guess, I am going to recognize them individually tonight, and I guess as I would say your name, please stand, and we'll get through everybody that's been involved. Mike Bergman from the math department, Tracy Brogman from communication arts, Maggie Condon from the fine arts, Kerry Garrett from World Languages, Carl Hader from CTE was unable to attend tonight, Greg Johnson, school counselor, Mike Kalina, dean of students, Elizabeth Minty, college and pre-renius instructional specialist, was unable to attend tonight, Katie Ruff, specialization, Alyssa Stoudt, science, Mike Weldon, PE and health. And then we also have our student representatives in the back. We have Elisa Manzur, our junior class president, and we have Cassie Sor, our junior class vice president. So before going any forward with this process, just like to give them a round of applause for the time they have. This process has been greatly appreciated, so thanks, everybody. In addition to these individuals, we had a chance in the spring to survey our teachers and get some initial data and information from them, collected 47 survey responses from them. In addition to Elisa and Cassie attending our site visits and being a part of those conversations, we also asked for student input in the spring, received 511 survey responses from them. We had a meeting we conducted with our student leadership, so all of our elected student officials and had a meeting with them, and then three meetings during Black Hawk time with a total of over 100 students that we met with to share this information. As far as parent input, when we surveyed parents, we had 145 responses from our parents, and we also conducted three meetings for our parents to attend to gain information about this scheduling proposal. So we feel over the course of the last year, we've given ample opportunity for involvement within our schedule process. So at this time, what I'll do is I'll be turning it over to our team, so they'll all be taking different slides in this presentation. Having presented this information already to the board, I wanted to give our committee members, and they wanted the opportunity to present with you tonight. So we'll start with our committee driving factors. I can stand up, sure. Center of attention.
I'm going to go over here and maybe just phone a little bit. So with my back to the camera. Firstly, we looked at the driving factors that are at the heart of all of our decisions as a committee. We wanted to look at it with maintaining a lens of achievement, a high levels of achievement, and these really helped through the process as we looked at student need and making sure that these decisions were more based on student needs. So I think that with all the logistics and everything that we can think about, it's really important to keep these at the heart of our decision-making process. So the first one that has been shared with you is kind of the obvious one that Scott mentioned before, is that we provide students with eight options. As more and more students are zero hour, things like that that just aren't sustainable, we have such a comprehensive list of classes available at Grafton High School, and I feel like that's a really defining factor. The committee feels like it's a defining factor. We want as many students as possible to take the classes that they want to at this high school. So that was the first one. The second factor is looking at how we can provide and give opportunities for enrichment for all of our students and for intervention. As we're looking at rolling out more and more on the RTO process and in terms of helping all students, whether the intervention level or the enrichment level, we wanted to make sure that we're giving them a structure and a place in that schedule to get the help that they need from the teachers. And then the third guiding factors we're looking at is, as we're increasing the student workload, as we're increasing by adding another class, how are we going to keep in mind the students' mental health? In recent years, we've definitely seen an increase of student needs based on mental health, and we want to make sure that the staff are providing, you know, an environment that's going to sustain a high level of academic achievement, but also by providing the support that they need to with mental health needs kept in mind. So with these three guiding factors, the schedule that we're proposing tonight involves really the schedule that fits all of these needs best. And again, it helps students at the heart of it, so we're excited about the presentation.
Hi, everyone. I'll stand over here, and I'm just going to take you through the highlights of the process that we've been through for really the last 12 months. It says 11 months, but we're like, we've done this presentation now another month. So we started, when we first sat down, we looked at our seven-period date and what the reality of that was. And then we went through about 25 area schools and looked at what their daily schedules looked like, the number of periods, the types of periods, block periods, skinny periods, what they offer for enrichment and intervention time, and what graduation requirements are. And that was really interesting because there are many different schedules, and none of them are the same, and that made us really realize that Grafton needs to make a schedule that's going to be right for Grafton. From there, we went back to our driving factors and then created surveys that Scott already mentioned for parents, teachers, and students. After we got all of the results from those surveys, we decided that we wanted to look at block schedules, and we wanted to look at like a variety or a combination of block or hybrid schedules. So we set up site visits to Port Washington High School, where they have that combination, and to Peewaqui, where they have a straight AB block day. Came back, met again, talked about like what's good for our driving factors in both of those schedules, what we would need to tweak. And then after, after summer, we came back and did our proposals. Here's what we think are going to be the best schedules for Grafton High School. And that pretty much brings us right down to here, to our final recommendation for you tonight. We've met with our faculty, we've met with our students, we've met with our parents, and we're really ready to move forward with our new schedule.
I think I always get the shortest slides. That's fine. Either way, it happened in our other meeting too. After this whole process, again, we presented the AB schedule, the hybrid schedule, and we gave the student council, the student leadership group, and our factory the opportunity to really kind of take a survey or take a vote as to what they felt met the best needs of our high school. So as you can see up there, the recommendations that they got to choose from were the AB block and the hybrid, and we'll go over what those are.
So a hybrid schedule for schools is just that, it means that we blend maybe a traditional kind of schedule with another schedule, or it could be a blending of more than two if we had it. For ours here, the one that we are moving forward with is a combination of a standard eight-period day schedule and an AB block. The one that we are forwarding in a typical week where we have five days, it guarantees that we will see every student in each of our classes three times. Some area schools that have hybrids that you might be familiar with, like they mentioned before, is Port Washington High School and also New Berlin Eisenhower. And again, the one that we're presenting to you is the one that was preferred by the staff and also our student leadership. I didn't tell you more about hybrid.
So like Tracy was saying, when we looked at 25 different schools, we saw 25 different schedules. There isn't one unique schedule that's out there, because if there was, everybody would do it. And so you got to make work what works for your school, for your staff, for your community. And so we proposed a couple of different schedules. We went around and went through some different ones, and what is on the screens right now and what you guys have a chance to look at is the proposal that we're bringing forward, the Grafton version of a hybrid schedule. And this is unique, this isn't something that we took from someone else, this is what we thought was best. You'll notice on Monday that there is no enrichment and intervention period to start the day. We'll get to that later on in the week. But it, all eight periods will meet for somewhere between 45 and 48 minutes, depending on what's going on each of those different hours. But the thought there was to start the week off by meeting with every single class to be able to kind of launch into whatever activities might be done throughout that week, and be able to see, every student see every teacher, every teacher be able to see every one of their students on that first day of the week. And so we thought that was important. So every one of those classes meets, but for a shorter period of time. What you see what happens when you go to Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, is that you'll notice that only the odd-numbered classes are going to meet on Tuesday. So there, that's the 1, 3, 5, 7. And then Wednesday will be the even-numbered classes, 2, 4, 6, and 8, and then back and forth again on Thursday and Friday. To start each of those days, though, is an intervention and enrichment period, what we currently call Black Hawk time. And so we're still working on if that's going to be the name moving forward or how we're going to refer to that. But that's a period of time where we can do a variety of different activities within our classroom. Again, interventions, enrichments, class meetings, there's a variety of different things that can be done during that time that isn't direct classroom instruction, but has an opportunity to serve our students in many different ways. That's going to take place on Tuesday mornings, Thursday mornings, and Friday mornings, for 39 minutes to start each day. Wednesdays, it won't take place because we will still continue to have our late start collaborative time that our teachers have right now that we really value, and during that same period of time, that 7:29 to 8:08 time, will be teachers meeting, so classes and intervention periods will not be held during that time. You can see that Monday is the fifth-hour period, and then Tuesday, Wednesday is the 5, 6. The lunch periods are built into there, which is right around the same time that we have them right now. And so we have the two lunch periods currently. That will be the way that we continue with that, with the 30-minute lunch periods. And so they will be built around, depending on, you know, which students have which classes. Right now, primarily, it's if you have class fifth hour upstairs versus downstairs with a few exceptions, that basically splits the school in half, and we'll continue to work under a similar way going forward. If you go to the next slide, just to hit some of the highlights, and we can go back to that if any. So again, Monday, every class meets. Tuesday through Friday is that alternating schedule. So as Carrie said, in a regular five-day week, you would see every class, every class, or every student would see every teacher three times a week, on Monday, and then either Tuesday, Thursday, or Monday, and then Wednesday, Friday. If it's a shortened week, which we know we have plenty of throughout the year with days off for holidays, staff development days, other things like that, obviously the schedule will have to adjust. And that's one of the things that we've talked about as a committee that, once the calendar is determined for a given school year, we'll probably have to go down and kind of map out how are we going to handle those short weeks? Because it'll make a difference if it's a two-day week like we had last week for Thanksgiving versus a three-day week or a four-day week. All of those weeks will be handled potentially a little bit differently versus that five-day week, and how do we kind of figure that out? Those are things that we still need to figure out and might even change kind of on a year-to-year or week-to-week basis. We'll figure that out as we go. Some of the other highlights is there's a five-minute passing period. We thought that that was helpful for the students after being in the same class for, especially on those longer block days, for being in the same class for an extended amount of time. The opportunity to get out, stretch your legs a little bit, use the restroom, and be able to just be, you know, a few minutes out of the classroom. We currently have four-minute passing periods. Adding that extra minute, we thought was helpful. A 30-minute lunch period, as I talked about before. The intervention and enrichment, like I said, is three days per week, which is an increase from what we have right now. We'll talk about that more later on. And the teacher collaborative time will still be on Wednesdays. We think that time is very valuable, and we're going to continue to maintain that moving
So there are basically two, there's two components to this moving forward. And the number one is, beginning with the 2019-2020 school year, Grafton High School will recommend implementation of the hybrid schedule as we've outlined in this presentation and also outlined at the curriculum committee meeting of the board in November. And the second component of that, which Carrie has mentioned a little bit earlier tonight, is that we will also be making a recommendation to increase the total number of credits required to graduate from Grafton High School from 22 to 24. Additional credits will fall under the student elective category. This will take us above the DPI minimum recommended credit requirements of 23.5. As a result of this, we'd be asking students starting next year to take seven courses on a daily basis, so seven out of their eight scheduled slots would be, would need to be filled. One of them can be available, be made available for study hall. This number, 24, is in line with all other local school districts that have an eight-period day. So when you look at that, it simply makes sense for us to raise that credit requirement because there are more opportunities for students to obtain those credits. And along with that, we would recommend phasing it in with the class of 2023, next year's freshman class. Not going to, not planning to change the rules in the middle of the game on any of our current students regarding their total number of credits required to graduate. So we believe that pairing the two of those together will make the graduation credit requirement work. So those would be the two components coming from our presentation tonight.
So as a committee, we have definitely looked at the fact that there is going to be several factors that are impacted by a schedule change. We've discussed that as a committee throughout our meetings, as well as been able to take those questions and those ideas back to our individual departments and have conversations with the rest of the teaching staff as well. So some of the main areas that were, we've considered and want to highlight is with student achievement. When we did our analysis of other schools across the area and across the state, we found that schools that did go to an increased period of class time did maintain a steady found that schools that did go to an increased period of class time did maintain a steady student achievement or showed growth in student achievement. So that's something that we feel fairly confident is going to be able to maintain the standard here at Grafton. Also, with our increased intervention time, we will be going from, currently, we have three interventions within a two-period, or two-week period to six. So doubling our intervention time will obviously help for us to be able to get more time with students and help them with their testing and scores. We've also recognized that this will mean a significant change in instruction for us teachers, looking at how then we are going to have to adjust our curriculum to work within that 85-minute period where before, we've been, you know, working within a 53-minute period. So I think we talked about it a little bit later, but we have looked at within our, identifying our power standards, how are we going to change our curriculum, and then also offering more support through our professional development for our teachers to be able to teach within that idea. And then changes in the daily structure. As has been said many times, students will be able to meet three times in each class. That was a big idea for this hybrid model as opposed to the A/B block. The A/B block, because of the alternating, you would maybe sometimes only see kids twice a week instead of three times a week. So we really wanted to make sure that we were able to maximize that. And then increased intervention times, fewer transitions during the school day. One of the student health factors that they've talked about is just feeling really frantic, having to go to seven different classes in a day. So while they're able to start Monday by seeing all of their teachers and kind of getting an overview of what they're doing throughout the week, that Tuesday through Friday, they're able to slow down and really focus on those classes within that block, which we think will really help them to feel more prepared for the things that we're working on.
Okay, so where do we go from here? Obviously, we are here and hoping to get your full support. Once we do, we're going to communicate that to the staff, or obviously to the staff, but to the students and parents as well, saying, okay, this is the schedule that Grafton High School is moving toward. It's been mentioned, also, teacher professional development, that's going to be a huge part of this process. So going forward for the remainder of the year and then also into next summer, we're hoping to have a lot of opportunities for our staff to learn how to change up their style of teaching so it can work better, or can work well, I should say, in the proposed schedule. So for example, at our faculty meeting last Monday, all of our departments broke, we broke into departments, and we had an opportunity to kind of just brainstorm, what are some things we think we're going to need? What kind of professional development will we be looking to help us, you know, acclimate ourselves to this schedule much better? That can include, you know, talking to other districts who have, are in a schedule similar to this or have parts of it. How do they do it? What were the challenges they had? And just kind of learn from others will be a big part of the process. And also, we're planning to run a mock schedule, probably in February or March, just take a week, and we're going to do the new schedule, see how it goes. Obviously, it's just a quick snapshot of it, but I think it'll be a good rehearsal for next fall. So we're hoping to do that as well. And then in January, end of January is when we're going to start our scheduling process like we always do. Students will be choosing their courses, and like any other year, we'll find out what courses we'll be running and so forth, and find out our FTEs, how many in departments and so forth, you know, based on student, student course requests. So that is where we are at. So thank you, Mr. Mantan.
So I really wanted you to hear also a couple of student reflections. I think it's really important that you hear their voices. So I really appreciate Lisa and Cassie coming tonight. So they're going to just address two different things. Each of them will address two different things with you from their perspective. So ladies?
Okay, well, I'm Lisa. I'm the junior's class president. I'm also like the treasurer of student council, and I'm a big part of the performing arts and like that sort of stuff.
I'm Cassie. I'm the vice president of the junior class, and I'm involved with the Project Lead the Way program in the music department. So I do performing arts, and then I'm a member of student council and HOSA as well.
Okay, well, we wanted to talk to you guys about the hybrid schedule from the student perspective and what we've learned through talking to like our peers, as well as like kind of like talking to just everyone in general, I guess, at our school. So you want to talk about?
Yeah, so we added our site visit to Peewaqui, what they have an A/B block schedule. So we met with students there, and they were actually really excited and enthusiastic about talking with us. And we had some concerns coming in since the A/B block schedule is so different from what we currently have. But our main concern was that the classes are 85 minutes long, and they really put our minds at ease, saying that like that really helped them, especially because a lot of the students that we met with were AP students. And Grafton has such a great AP program that they really felt that that extra night to get their work done and study really benefited them in the long run with some of those harder classes, and that that increased enrichment period time in the start of the day was really helpful with meeting with their teachers and staying caught up on all of their homework.
And then also with our port visit, when talking to students there, they showed a lot of like enthusiasm towards having like, I think they had two days a week where they met with all their teachers. And so they were able to touch base, because that was one of our concerns with like the A/B block, was that we would, one week we'd see them two days, another week we'd see them like three days. So it was like kind of inconsistent. But they showed a lot of like enthusiasm towards the fact that they'd be able to like touch base and like kind of like center themselves. And then that's a big reason as to why we like the hybrid schedule also, because it's on a Monday. So like you start your week that way, and then the rest of the week is a little less like stressful, and you like, you make your way gradually. They also were just really excited about like the fact that we were thinking about changing our schedule, because when talking to Peewaqui and Port students, when we told them about our schedule, they were kind of shocked, which is like a little bit crazy, because they were like, so you guys only have seven options? And we're like, yeah. And they're like, isn't that stressful? You have them like every day? And we're like, yeah. But yeah, so from both like visits, we were really excited about the stuff that we learned and how like excited the kids were too about the way that their schedule was performed and like how they go through the day. So what we're looking forward to, like me personally, well, actually, both of us are pretty like, I would believe, academically achieving, where we don't, we don't take study halls for those kids. So we've always wanted that eighth option. I haven't been able to take a lot of the classes I wanted to because I didn't have that eighth option, which is, I was one of those kids that went up to Mr. Mantan, was like, I need that. And so going into this schedule, I knew that like that was something that we were going to be really excited about. And so, yeah, you want to say something?
Yeah, I'm personally really, really excited for the addition of the eighth option, because that's a problem that I've run into in my schedule. I actually was one of the kids who started off the zero-hour program as a freshman. And that's not, like I would agree with the statement made before, that that's not really super sustainable, like long-term. So eight options is just really invaluable to us, like exploring different departments. And with the increased enrichment period time, right now, we only have one to two per week, which can be really, really difficult trying to balance, especially multiple APs, extracurriculars. It's not really enough time for us to meet with our teachers. And we had a lot of student concern about keeping late starts. So with the current schedule, we get to keep that, which is something that the students that we've discussed were really passionate about. And so overall, I just really enjoy the hybrid schedule and the opportunity to meet with my teachers three times a week as opposed to five times, especially with the addition of the eighth option.
Yeah, also with intervention time, like as students who don't take study halls, like Black Hawk times, like we really rely on them. Like even now, with the only, like the three that we get every two weeks, and so having like that doubled in the sense in two weeks would be so much more helpful. And being so incredibly honest, I would use that time like crazy, and it would be such a, like it would just, it would help with like mental health like a lot. And so, yeah, because a lot of students were concerned with like our late start, but we told them it was okay, it appears to be fine. But yeah, we're really looking forward to having this, like the eighth option, extra intervention time, and just like the calmer way of going about school, because there's a lot of stress that comes into just like having, like going home and having seven class periods to study and four, and like have homework for, and you're spending the whole afternoon doing it, and like along with extracurricular activities and like tech weeks and like rehearsals, or like just as sports, like athletes also, or kids who are in both, which a lot of our students are. So yeah, we love your push towards this.
Thank you so much. So, you know, we really, we really wanted to, you know, I really wanted the faculty to share all the hard work that they've done with you tonight, and wanted to involve our students as well as far as talking to them about our process and what they're looking forward to as well. So hopefully, you can see how comprehensive and inclusive this process was and how dedicated we've been over the course of the last year to making a decision that will, that is right for Grafton High School moving forward. So we're really looking forward to moving, moving forward with that in the 2019-2020 school year. And at this time, any of us can entertain questions. So if you have a question for any one of our faculty members or for our students, they'd be happy to answer anything that you have, that you, that you're wondering about as well.
I suspect just for the benefit of those that may be watching or listening in, I suspect that there were questions at the curriculum committee where this was presented. Oftentimes, it is the case where the work is done there, and this is kind of an update and refresher. So the only question I have, because I was not at the curriculum committee meeting, is it sounds as if the scheduling is going to start in January, right?
Yeah.
We're 45 to 60 days away from there, depending on when. What efforts need to be undertaken to put us in a position to start our scheduling?
Yep. So I think, you know, first and foremost, we want presenting this tonight and receiving support for, for the schedule. Moving beyond that, we immediately want to begin with the professional development component for our classroom teachers. That is the most important piece of the next nine or 10 months, is to be able to get that going immediately. So as Greg indicated, we've already started collecting ideas from teachers, and we'll continue with that in terms of planning what that will look like all the way through August of 2019. As far as the scheduling is concerned, we really need to just start working with the student services department, so Mr. Johnson, Mr. Hanley, Ms. Isbell, and their team, and really making sure that we're getting Skyward set up to be correctly scheduled for an eight-period, an eight-period day. So we'll work through all those components. You know, Greg, anything you want to add from your perspective?
Yeah, we meet with all those students. Right now, we're doing their English classes. And so just, you know, explaining to them, you now have eight hours, basically, and how that'll impact their schedule, and just helping guide them through that process, because it is new for them. So I don't anticipate a lot of issues with that, but it's just going to be a learning curve for our students.
Communication will be key. Now getting this, the word out that here's the change, answering any questions that come about with the change, and then certainly letting students know about the options that they have within their day.
Any other questions?
Just as long as we've got a number of staff members here, I'm curious, with the reduction in instruction time, are you feeling stressed that you're going to be able to get that amount of curriculum in, in a reduced amount of time? And I see Mike shaking his head.
I will certainly say I am. I know our department has struggled with this. I know talking to other area schools that went through similar changes. The math department felt a great deal of pressure to do this. So stress, yes. Excitement at the same time, no, is a yes. To go to this schedule, which is why, has been said a number of times, that professional development getting started immediately, basically, is going to be really helpful for us. We've got some, some built-in days already that we have throughout the rest of this year that we hope to get started on, starting some of that transition, and then whatever time that we, you know, have during the summer to get ready for that. But we know we've got a lot of work ahead of us. So yeah, stress is certainly part of it. Again, I'll speak from my department, some of which are here today for other reasons. But yeah, so I know, I know that's a, that's a part of it for, you know, for my, my area where we've got a lot of, a lot of content, we talk about power standards and things like that. We've got one of the biggest, just sheer quantities of those standards to cover, that we are looking at a bit of, okay, how are we going to do this? And we don't have answers yet, but we're excited to take on that challenge.
I think from the other perspective too, this is only my second year in Grafton, and previous to this, I taught in a modified block. And I will say, from teaching in both models, instructional time and instructional minutes are very different. So you can do a lot in an 85-minute block as compared to two 15-minute periods. So yes, it is a switch in how we're teaching, but I don't necessarily think the idea of like loss of minutes is going to be quite as impactful as some people think.
Thank you.
We're actually hoping in some classes, we can actually gain minutes, perhaps some of the AP science classes, by having them actually two class periods, so that they could actually be every day, and that would actually increase the minutes with those particular courses.
Any additional questions? Any other comments? If not, then I think a motion would be in order to bring this discussion forward and the recommendation forward for consideration by the full board.
I'll make that motion to bring this forward. I heard at curriculum, and I think I was fully in support of it then.
And a motion is made and seconded. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor of the motion, aye. Aye. Opposed? And it passes. Certainly, thank you to all of the committee members and especially to the students. I mean, outstanding students and outstanding representatives for going out and getting the information that you received from both Port Washington and from Peewaqui, and even your peers, in terms of how this really does impact you and how this schedule change can make it better for all students, for yourselves, and for those to come. So certainly to all of you, thank you very much for your hard work and effort over the last 12 months in pulling this together, and we look forward to good things to come.
Thanks, everybody. Really appreciate it.
Thank you.
And I'd like to echo that as well. And I came to therefore, they're there, they're back with me last Monday, and still back at the end, and students who did a great job tonight as well. But like I know, it's a, it's a leap of faith for them in one sense, because you're going from a seven-period day to a different schedule, all those different changes that go with that. And I just appreciate Scott leading this with having a representation from all different areas across the school, not just in one content area, or core, elective, or whatever it may be, but have all representation. I think that was a really nice job he's done with that, and just the staff being willing to take this, this challenge and bring forward an idea that is unique. There isn't anyone that has this hybrid model, the way we're doing it, and I'm excited to see what that looks like moving forward. So kudos to you and to the staff. Appreciate all your work on that.
Thank you. All right. New course proposals. Yes. You're free to stay if you'd like.
Except for you in the second row. People in the second row cannot. Heard Rose well. So with that new schedule, so the new schedule proposal that we have, as we move to eight periods, it is also looking at, as every year, looking at our, at our course selection. Scott will walk us through what the various departments are bringing forward this year as ads. Yes. So on an annual basis, we review all of our courses, and we look to bring forward new and exciting opportunities for our students. And tonight, you will see opportunities come forward from three different departments, from our business and information technology department, our math and computer science department, and then also our family consumer science department as well. So what we've asked each of them to do will be to share their course proposals with you, answer any questions that you may have regarding their course proposals, and then look to add those courses moving forward for the 2019-2020 school year. The proposals in business and information technology first, which Sandy and Lori will work together on, also relate to a board agenda item that will occur next, the financial literacy graduation requirement. So I want to alert you in advance that those two relate, okay, in terms of the agenda items. So with that being said, Sandy, Lori, come on up, and we're excited to hear about the new course proposals in business and information technology.
All right. Good evening. We have three course proposals on the table tonight from the business department, and I'll explain why there's three. The first one is a course that's been on our radar for quite a while now, several years, and that's the CAP personal finance course. And CAP is Cooperative Academic Partnership Program. So that's a college-level course that UW Oshkosh provides for us to instruct, and kids can take the class for college credit. They pay about $100. They pay about $100 of credit. I think this year it was $100 of credit. That might change next year. And go through a rigorous college-level type course. They must use the college textbook, and that's part of the, the cost behind that course. And it has to be taught in the fashion that UW Oshkosh teaches it. So that would get them three credits. Do they have to take it for the three credits for Oshkosh credit? No, they don't. So they can still take that course and not sign up for the three credits. The next two courses is kind of a restructuring of my existing Personal Finance Course. For the last 16 years, I've had a two semester Personal Finance Course. And with the advent of the Financial Literacy Requirement by the state of Wisconsin, we are going to make one semester of that, one of the options for graduation requirement. So that would be kind of a stream-down course to match the standards that we've identified on the Financial Literacy Committee. And that leaves us with, what about the second half of that class? We did not want to lose those components in that course. So the second half is called Personal Finance Wealth Building. And that course would provide an option for students who still want that two semester, full steam, Personal Finance Course. And so we would still be able to get into stocks, bonds, mutual funds. We play a stock market game. We do a budgeting simulation through H&R Block as a 10-week simulation, as well as the stock market games, a 10-week simulation. We typically take a field trip to Junior Achievement Finance Park where the kids get to go through a day's activities of a life in the day of and manage their budget. Some of those items will not fit in the one semester course that would be required for, or one of the options for graduation requirement. So that's the third course. So we have three kind of remolded courses sitting before you. So I will now answer fully any question. Or I'll refer it to Lori. But are, are there any questions about the courses? Don't make it too easy on me.
How many students are in currently in class today?
Currently, we have three sections of 21, 23 students, about 68 students in three two semester sections of Personal Finance. Sophomores through seniors. And the CAP program is, by the way, Oshkosh class is juniors and seniors only with a certain grade point level, and that's Oshkosh's requirement. But the other two would remain sophomore through senior option. And they would have to take the first Personal Finance to take the Wealth Building Course. Or they could take the Oshkosh and then still the Wealth Building Course.
Certainly excited about all the options. The CAP Personal Finance Course goes toward meeting the district post-secondary goal. So, you know, I appreciate Sandy looking to add that within her particular content area as far as our post-secondary goal is concerned. So that's certainly something that I know Sandy's been looking into for a while. And CAP Personal Finance or just Personal Finance, either of those would meet, which will be the Financial Literacy Requirement that we're going to talk about in the next agenda item.
Thank you.
Thanks for all your hard work, Sandy. Appreciate it. Okay. Next, we're going to have the Math Department. So it's really in two phases here. First is a math-specific course titled Algebra Support. And Mr. Rithker's here to talk to you about that course.
Not a very catchy title right now. It's still a work in progress, but that's the, that's the name he came up with right now. The course came about as a result of some of our 912 and 612 math curriculum work that has been going on since last year. And we finally came to a decision that we needed to revamp our math pathways. Students currently enrolled in Algebra B, decided to drop that, that course going forward. That was a path students typically only made to geometry by the end of their, their high school career, which was not a college or career-ready path. So starting next year, we're not going to offer Algebra B. All incoming freshmen will start in, in a regular algebra class or higher. So with that in mind, we know we're going to have some students that are going to be having some struggles getting through that regular algebra curriculum. Therefore, we're going to create a course called Algebra Support. That will be taken, it'll be a double dose of math. They'll have their algebra course. With the change in schedule, we're kind of looking at some different options. We'll probably have Algebra, say on an odd date, and then the Math Support will be an even date, so some of those kids or most of those kids will have math every day. This, trying to tie some loose ends together in the math department, this should help with getting to improving some of our RTI strategies. We really haven't done much of a Level 3 RTI. This will allow us that opportunity, having that group pullback and getting some more intensive remediation, so we'll close the gaps, which, you know, school report card looks good if we can close those gaps. And this will also get more students on the pathway to advanced algebra by the end of their junior year, which I think we've heard something from the board wanting us to get a higher percentage of kids there. So except it's hitting RTI, it's closing gaps, school report card, ACT. So again, you know, Mike Birman brought it up earlier. We're excited. We're apprehensive with some of the changes, but we're also excited because I think this is a key piece to the schedule change in the math department. This is going to be helping us bridge, bridge the gap for some of those students. And questions? It will be elective. It'll be half-credit or a year-long credit. Students will enroll in, but when we start seeing the progress or close the gaps, when they're on pace, then they can at the end of semester opt back out and be left to choose another course, second semester.
From my perspective, I'd just like to thank Mike and his team for tackling difficult conversations. So, you know, getting at difficult conversations, a lot of back and forth regarding Algebra B, but getting to a spot where we feel everybody can start with Algebra or higher as they enter Grafton High School.
From an elective perspective, will you be encouraging certain kids to get into the support group from the beginning, or will?
Some of that's going to be done through math testing at the, at the middle school level, as well as senior teacher recommendations. So to meet the, the Level 3 RTI, we are going to have a cut score for, for some of the math, math testing. So we are hitting the right, right number of students.
Okay.
Along with that, we're going to use a rubric like we use on the other end for our higher, higher achieving students. We use data, math, math data typically, and then along with that, the teacher recommendation really comes from clicking specific criteria. We're going to reflect. The math department's going to be working on that.
One thing we also, the math testing is going to be a piece because as we saw in our faculty Monday night, we have roughly what, 100, 100 open enrollment students, and a lot of them are freshman level in algebra. For a lot of means, the first class they take at the high school. So for them, it won't have the eighth grade recommendation or that piece of data. So incoming students are open enrollment. Students will look into math test them as well sometime at registration or before they start school.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Next, we have Erin Sumner in our Computer Science Program. Erin has done a great job with the growth of our Computer Science Program and has taken the lead on that. So she is excited to present her new course tonight.
Okay. So I currently have three classes. I have Computer Science 1, which is dealing with Google Basic. I have AP Computer Science Principles, which is, we're on year three for that course. And in that, they learn JavaScript and Python. And then there's AP Computer Science A, which kids learn Java, purely Java. So I'm proposing a fourth-year course, and this one would cover C++ for one semester, and the second semester would be virtual reality. And we're going to be using Unity for that. And I, it's really important for my kids who start their freshman year, they don't have a fourth course. Every year, I have kids do independent studies to learn something they're interested in because I'm not a course that's for them to take. It's also good for kids. I have a kid who's a junior last year and a senior this year. He took it for the first time and he really likes it. And so I have him enrolled in both of my AP classes this year. This course has to be after Level 1. They have to have Computer Science 1 first. And then they can take it at any time. And they can double up at any time too, if they're interested in that. So if they start later in their career, they could always take two classes in one year as well. So looking forward to it. Hope it gets through to any questions. I'm excited about the virtual reality piece. I don't, I have to learn it. So it's going to be exciting to do that, and I think it's going to be a lot of fun for the kids to get to have that. That's going to be like a fun piece for the kids to be able to program virtual reality. Do you guys have any questions? C++ I've covered, taught already. That's my, the, in the finance piece. C++ I already have all the curriculum for that. It used to be Computer Science 2, and it was just a semester-long course. It's been a long time since I've done it, but I already have that all set. But the virtual reality piece, that's completely new.
So I don't see in here, how many do you expect to take this fourth course?
So I put down 15 to 20. Right now, I have 26 kids in my Level 1 class, and I've got 16 in Principles and then my Java, they're all seniors, so they're going to be, well, no, I've got a couple juniors in there. I've got 12 in there. So I'm hoping I can get 15 to 20. We do know there's a conversation that we had here in the future about what classes we're going to offer every year. I would love to get to the point to do all of them, but we'll have to see just what enrollment is, what kids sign up for. But my Computer Science 1 every year is getting bigger. Couple of years ago, I had two Level 1s. So it all depends, it's going to be a year-to-year, depending on what I get, what kids want to sign up for.
Okay.
I'm hoping with the eighth option too, it might have more kids. I have a lot of kids who want to take it, but they just can't fit it in. They want to do something else. And then they don't, then they miss out on having that opportunity that may be programming us for them. And they don't know until they try it, so.
That's one of the exciting pieces about the new schedule, is that I think it'll afford more students the opportunity to take, you know, excellent classes like, like Erin's proposing tonight, so.
Any other questions?
Thanks, Erin. Appreciate it. All right. And last but certainly not least, we have our Family and Consumer Science Department here. Now we have a department of two this year, Brenda and Carmen. And they're going to talk to you about their course proposal, which is a capstone foods course, which we're really excited about.
Great. Okay. So it's going to be called Advanced Foods and Restaurant Management. And it's a capstone course. It's more advanced. And it will give the students here at Grafton, you know, another career choice or another career pathway option. And right now, it's, you know, I looked up some statistics, and right now, the industry employs over 14 million people in the United States. And so, you know, I think, you know, a lot of times, kids would take, the students would take culinary arts food concepts, and then they come to me and say, well, what's next? Well, I didn't have all what's next. So this is my what is next. It's a capstone course. It's going to take both semesters, semester one and semester two. During the first semester, we'll continue to practice and learn and develop those advanced culinary skills. And then students are going to be required to become certified in a serve safe food handler course. Lot to say. And so they, it's, it's done online, and the exam is also done online. And I think we have three, three chances to make it through. And I just thought that was a real important component because second semester, we plan on opening a carryout restaurant. And I want the kids to really, you know, know what it takes for safety and sanitation in order to, to produce food for other people. And so this certification also will give advanced standing at MEPC. So any student who wants to go to MEPC for their culinary program, they will not have to repeat or take that back to MEPC. So that is, that's going to be advanced standing. We are still trying, trying to get, I don't know if it'll be, you know, the new course or maybe a combination, including the new course, for transcripted credit. What MEPC is doing right now is they're restructuring their whole culinary program. And John Reese is the head of that. And so we have been talking, and we're going to continue to talk, and they're really interested in trying to get transcripted credit for this class. During the second semester, we are planning on opening up a carryout restaurant where staff can order maybe lasagna or mac and cheese or soups. We're not exactly sure what we're going to be, you know, serving. And of course, you know, the students have to be part of it, so we will, you know, talk about it. And you can put your order in, and then you will come and pick it up, and you'll have dinner that night. You just pop it in the oven. And part of that is not just, you know, making the item, but it's also doing a analysis of, a cost analysis and profit. You know, what are we going to be making? What are the costs and so on? And then...
Some of the other things that the students will be working on are just kind of honing those knife skills a little bit more. They learn how to use a knife, but we just want them to be more efficient and accurate with using knives like professionals would. We also want them to learn a little bit more about how to alter recipes. There are so many people like a lot of specialties with dietary needs, so just being able to take a recipe that they may have made before, and how can we make it for a person who has a certain type of dietary need? We also want the students to be able to learn how to follow recipes more easily, but also create recipes of their own, so that they have that skill as well. The students will have the opportunity also to work in our food service area with Wendy Binder to see how the professional type of production department is doing, and possibly being able to serve some food to more students by as well with this program. We also want the students to really think about, you know, what is the next step if they are going to be going into some type of culinary program beyond Grafton High School? What would they need to have with those background skills to move to that next level? And this could come in either getting into a culinary school or possibly getting into some type of work program, where they would be then continuing their skills there. Just thinking about people who have really skilled in the management skill, they can learn it in this course, they can use those in other career areas to not just within the culinary industry. So even if they choose not to pursue culinary as a career path, they still have a lot of skills that could be used in any type of career beyond.
And then one more thing I want to mention is that something that I've tried in the past, and it's just really hard to get it into just one semester, and that is for our students to be able to go out there and compete against other schools in a culinary, you know, fashion such as, and there's a wellness competition through DPI. There's one at the Restaurant Association that's Pro-Start related. And so it would be nice to get the personnel to compete, also maybe to do some things here for the district and, you know, help out in any way you can. I don't know, serving food, making food, and that kind of thing too, so get some help there.
Any questions?
Got another, another course, you know, aimed at district goal and providing a capstone opportunity for kids, which I think they're going to love, especially as a part of the eight-period schedule. Courses like this should become a reality for our students, so. And that concludes all of our new courses. We recommend that they be approved for the 19-20 school year.
All right. No further questions. I'd entertain a motion to approve all of the courses as presented, with consideration in scheduling connections. All those in favor of the motion, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? And it passes. Thank you all very much for the research and work.
Thanks, everybody. No, it's a good time. Thank you.
All right. Financial Literacy Graduation Requirements.
That's okay. That's I paused. Because there are many things that we do use, that we could, we'd be able to utilize them for various functions, so it would be, yeah, I mean, we'd be able to use them, which is great. We're excited for that. I'm excited for all these courses. I think they all have some, have great niches that students will expand for students and really help them, whether it's a struggling student, whether it's an advanced student in all these different areas, whether it's in business or whether it's in the food area. Like, there's just so much, it's a variety of pieces, which I think is really great to see, some of those pieces, and getting more courses that can align with college articulation as well is great as well.
A lot of hard work.
Yep. A lot of hard work by teachers.
Absolutely.
And being creative in coming up with some of these ideas as well. So I'll turn over to Diana to talk to us a little about the financial literacy. So I'll turn it over to Diana to talk to us a little about the financial literacy graduation requirement that we're asking the board for.
Right. So some of the things that you heard tonight alluded to the financial literacy, excuse me, graduation requirement that I'm gonna be speaking about right now. So in late 2017, Wisconsin proposed the, it's called Wisconsin Act 94. Essentially, it requires school districts to adopt financial literacy standards and have curriculum aligned K-12, to be able to, to have that. So we had a process in place. We started discussing this last year as part of our social studies curriculum work, which began last year and is still continuing to this day. Originally, we started the discussion as a full department of social studies only, and then recognized we needed to bring onboard different departments, business and family and consumer science. So altogether, we had five meetings. The first meeting was the full social studies department, the second meeting was the full social studies department, the business department. And then we actually narrowed down to a committee of essentially four, including three departments. So it was Shannon Measner from Social Studies, Sandy and Lori who presented already tonight, and Brenda also who presented, representing Social Studies, Business and Family and Consumer Science. So our process also included reviewing the law and understanding what the requirement was asking of us, looking at other districts, what they were doing, how they were doing it, so what type of requirement, was it a credit requirement, was it just a graduation completion requirement? And what department and what courses were being offered in other schools, in other high schools, that would help students acquire this. We developed our essential understandings, which you will see in the document attached as our overall goals for a Grafton graduate. So we started with our, you know, what are our main goals, and then we worked backwards from there. We looked at the standards, which are the Wisconsin Model Academic Standards for Personal Finance Literacy. And then we analyzed what we currently had in our courses. For example, in our econ courses and, and in our other courses in personal finance and then in family and consumer science. We identified what we thought would be our power standards for financial literacy, and then where were those covered or not covered. And that led us to some of our decisions that we're gonna talk about in just a minute. So we're recommending that this change occur for this year's freshman class, the graduating class of 2022. The reason that we're not waiting until the next year's freshman class is because this year's freshman class wouldn't have been able to take any of these courses anyway as freshmen. So they can easily meet the requirement, starting with their sophomore year, as long as it, you know, they have that opportunity and knowledge before they set up for their sophomore year and beyond. Many of the courses, our courses our kids take anyway, and so we felt very confident that, that students could still meet this requirement, and we wouldn't have to wait a full, another year. So what I've attached for you is showing you that, that the financial literacy standards are not going to happen only at the high school. One of the things I thought the board might be concerned about is, okay, so we, we get kids into freshman year, and all of a sudden, boom, there's a requirement for financial literacy, what have we done up to that point? So you can see here that by the end of grade four, we have three power standards. And from kindergarten through second grade, it's really building background knowledge and experiences for them related into social studies and literacy, reading literacy. Starting at grade three, we have actual units of study in social studies that focus on financial literacy. They're aligned to our, the new social studies standards as well as the old, because the new ones just came out. And they're aligned to these three power standards for financial literacy. Then you can see in grade five, we're really excited about Junior Achievement Biz Town, so our, our students are going in, is it April, I think? I think they're going in April or May. Later in the school year, one day Kennedy's going, a different day Woodview's going. The teachers are getting trained in January, so we're excited to try this out. And I had it at my old school, so I know it's a really great program. Making sure it fits for what we need in Grafton is what we're gonna be looking at this year. And so those ICAN statements aren't completely figured out yet, because we need to learn more at the training in January. Then you can see by the end of eighth grade, we have four power standards, some of which were also power standards in K-4. And those are met through each of our middle school social studies curriculum. And you can see that they take a different angle from that perspective, depending on the major content of that grade level. At eighth grade, Lori runs the reality store, which is exciting, really great opportunity for all of our students. So she outlined some of the things that happened in the reality store that are really great alignment to financial literacy. And then you can see at, at the high school level, we have several more power standards, and the students would be able to meet the requirement for graduation by either taking personal finance, and how Sandy talked about it, there's three options listed here, but really, they would achieve that requirement in that first option, which is personal finance, because that's a prereq for anything else. They could take AP macro or micro. What we identified, what Shannon identified there, was that in, in the economics course, some of the power standards that we believed are, were really essential under personal finance were not really in the course currently, but there are opportunities. So Shannon will be working with Sandy to create a Canvas module that includes a focus, a tight focus on the power standards that aren't covered, related to personal finance. And then after the AP course at the end of the year, because most of our students take both AP macro and micro, so they have it for a full year, there's an opportunity in a week or two to be able to pull together some activities around personal finance. So we felt like we could really make that a good fit for our highest achieving students that are taking AP, and not have to make them do something in addition to that, unless they want to. Some of them will want to take some of the other courses. And then Brenda's course, Independent Living, was a really nice fit. It met all of the power standards. The only thing she has to adjust are some of her assessments, to make sure she's assessing what we're looking for, for personal finance. So all of those things, those are the three different options that students would be able to achieve the requirement. We moved forward with the recommendation that's not about a half credit, it's just a graduation requirement, much like the civics exam. So it would be monitored by the counseling department. We would make sure that students, that that's on their radar, and we don't let anybody by the senior year not meet that requirement through their scheduling process. Did I miss anything?
Sounds great.
Any questions that the board has?
I don't think so. Do we need action, motion? Okay, so entertain a motion to accept the administrative recommendation regarding methods to acquire the financial literacy graduation requirement. Some...
Second?
Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, aye?
Aye.
Pose. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And the graduation credit change, Scott mentioned this in his presentation, and as you've heard their group speak and so forth, we have a recommendation to, for the board to approve it.
Yep, yep, just coming back to the second recommendation we made tonight, would be to increase the graduate, Grafton High School graduation requirement from twenty-two to twenty-four, beginning with the nineteen, 2019, 2020 freshman class, which was the graduating class of 2023. We'd ask for you to approve that tonight.
Motion to that effect? We have a second. Is there any discussion? I think we've covered most of the things that we covered.
So the means then that's long enough to do this is by going to the eighth, the eighth course, that's...
Yep, yep, adding, adding an eighth option each day certainly allows this to be reasonable for students, you know, of any level of achievement to obtain over the course of four years, yes.
All right, all those in favor of the motion, aye?
Aye.
Pose. And that also passes, thanks.
Thank you.
State report cards.
Yes, so on November thirteenth, the Wisconsin Department of Public Construction released their annual report card, which goes, which gives us a district report card. I believe it started in, in 2011, twelve is when we first started with report cards. 2012, thirteen is when we had a district report card for the first time. And then they, I think it was fourteen, fifteen, they stopped, we did not have a report card, there was a hiatus from report cards. And so now for the last three years, we've had report cards. We've continued to see our district report card increase and gradually go up. And our buildings have fluctuated in that way, and we're gonna walk you through all of the different things that we've seen, both, both the highlights, as well as areas that we're working on, similar to what you heard as we were talking about forward data, and which drives some of these scores, ACT data, which also drives the score at the high school. So I'll turn it over to Diana, and her team are all gonna be talking tonight.
Great, thank you. So I'm gonna start out the presentation and end the presentation with sort of what we're doing about all of the data and our next steps. All right, so what's included is the components of the state report card, looking at the district report card, and then each building will highlight their report card. I will take on GES, so we can also highlight GES. What is assessed on the report card, it's, they're called priority areas, just like in the past, ELA and math proficiency, like Jeff said, it's really based on forward and ACT, and the alternative assessments that Laura has spoken about before. There's district growth, closing the gaps, and on-track post, and post-secondary readiness. Those are the four components of the priority areas. All right, so when we take a look at the district score, a few things to highlight. As Jeff mentioned, we, our score has increased every year as a district, so that is exciting. And for the first time, we are in the significantly exceeds expectations category. Prior to that, we had been in the exceeds expectations, which we were also very proud of, but this is a great move up into the next category. We are number nine out of thirty-two districts in the CISA One in the southeastern part of Wisconsin, which has been an improvement every year. Now we're in the, you know, number nine, so top ten of those thirty. We are number twenty-five out of three hundred sixty-seven Wisconsin districts. That puts us in the top six point eight percent of districts across Wisconsin, K-12 districts across Wisconsin. And that is an increase by about two percent from last year, which is, which is a great increase. In Ozaki County, it puts us at number two. We're only behind one other district, which will remain unnamed. And so we're number two. That is something we're really, really proud of for our district score. And so those are some of the highlights. As far as our buildings, our high school remains in the top eleven percent, they were there last year as well, and John Long has increased and moved up to the fourteenth percent of all middle schools in, in Wisconsin. That's up, I believe, three percent from last year. So some really nice points of pride for our district, for our overall score for our district. When we look at student achievement, how did Grafton perform? So we are above the state by seventeen point six percent in overall achievement. Our ELA achievement is a little bit higher than our math achievement as a total score for our district. And remember that the district report card is not an average of all of our schools, because that, that is a misconception that some people have. The district is actually its own school, so to speak, and it's really because of the closing the gaps, because your gap groups change with the amount of students that you have. And Laura will talk about that a little bit more when she talks about closing the gaps. All of our Grafton schools scored higher than the state in ELA and math, in the, in the priority area of student achievement, and all of our schools were exceeds or significantly exceeds expectations. So with student achievement, our performance was, was very high. When we look at here, we can see, I, oh yeah, there we go. Okay, so I highlighted where we are. So we're at about fifty-eight percent, fifty-eight point five, I think, percent of proficient and advanced in ELA and fifty-seven point five percent in math. So hovering right around the same. And we're very proud of that. We want that to be higher, though. And so where we need to work is these numbers here with basic and below basic. We wanna see those start moving into the proficiency category, of course, and every single school is focused on that movement. So I'm gonna turn it over now for growth, to Rick, who is going to speak about, about growth.
You know, I realize that this kind, your eyes kind of start to stare at the numbers and glaze over, and so always important to kind of realize that this is accountability system devised by state legislature, and they identify these priority areas. And going back to what Diana talked about, is just straight out performance, your achievement. Do you have a lot of students at advanced and proficient? And they give you a scoring area for, to create that, generate that score. The second area, the growth area, is the measurement between students did the prior year to this year. So when you talk about growth, you're literally creating, measuring third to fourth, fourth to fifth, fifth to sixth, sixth to seventh, and seventh to eighth. There is no growth measure at the high school. So if you look at the report card for the high school, you see it, it's just not applicable. It will be potentially in the future, a part of the growth score. But this growth score then is generated by a, it was actually from the University of Wisconsin earlier, in the research area, where they actually identify that third to fourth, that third to fourth grader's growth. But then they also put that student in a demographic characteristic of what's expected. And their goal with this growth score is to determine the, like, the impact or the effect of the school on that student. And so when you're looking at the growth scores for the students, you're, you're measuring that one-year growth, but you're also measuring that student at their demographic level. One of the things that we saw, looking at our growth score, you know, just take, quick takeaways, where John Long Middle School scored the highest in the district in the priority of, priority area for ELA and math growth, and well above the state. And the other takeaway, before my computer turns off here, is, is that Woodview and Kennedy, if I can read that, always happens to me. Woodview and Kennedy Elementary performed lower than the state average in growth, and action steps are being implemented. So one of the things you can look at this, is you can look at areas where there's strengths, and areas where, particularly in the relationship between ELA and math, where one, one of the content areas is stronger than the other. And again, like I said, there is no growth specific in terms of, of achievement measured at the high school. One thing, if we can advance this next slide here, and you can see how it is, the ELA and math, and creates this, this overall score. And it is, this actually is a priority area where they, they do an average of the schools. The other three priority area, priority areas, they calculate a different, a district score that's slightly different. When you look on the detailed report card for our growth, it straight up has the count there of the N of how many students are involved, like, same thing I said, third to fourth, fourth to fifth. And then it creates that value-added score that I said that is, is for each student, three being a middle, it's a range of, of between one to six. And within that, you can kind of see some variation, where there's some strengths, areas for improvement, things are above three, things are below three, for each of the schools. And then our overall score for the district had slightly lower score for the ELA than for math. One of the other things that we can take from this report, because remember, this report card has created an accountability system for every district in the state to kind of do a comparison, or a five-star rating system, as they say in the state law. One of the things we can do is take the information they give us, and kind of look for areas where we could, could, you know, find some areas also improvement or celebration. There's this supplemental growth data, it's not necessarily part of the calculated score, but something that I think is, is, when I was looking into this, of interest, that particularly with those individual students that you're measuring their growth from year to year, that we actually are doing well in certain areas there, particularly with math, if I can point that out, for students with disabilities. Now remember, this is comparing those sixty-eight students... Now remember, this is comparing those 68 students against other students with disabilities across the state. And this is going to be different than the priority area that Laura's going to cover next with closing the gaps. And so these areas are of interest where we have a strength for those 68 students of how they grew between one year and another, and in, compared to other students in the state who have students with disabilities. So this, this district supplemental growth data is something that doesn't go into the overall calculated score, but something is information that we can take. So in, in closing, what Laura's going to be talking about now is the closing the gaps. And that's different than the growth, okay? The growth is measuring how students are growing in their same group. Closing the gap is going to be how the students are, are improving compared to the students not in their demographic group. I'll turn that over to Laura.
So like Rick said, we are not only responsible for the growth of our students, but also closing the achievement gap between some of those subgroups that typically underperform or perform not as well as, as others. So that includes, okay. Those groups include, you know, students with disabilities, economically disadvantaged, our ELL students, and then looking at race as well. So right here, this score represents the progress that students in subgroups that I talked about, in, in closing the gaps in reading and achievement performance, and in the graduation rates, compared to their counterparts. So students with disabilities are closing their gaps compared to students without disability are closing their gaps. One thing to note is that the district has increased both ELA and math 16 points in this closing of the gap between 2016-17 and 2017-18. This is where we can really kind of take a look at, at the subgroups. So over here, we took a look. So these subgroups, combined out by race, are compared to, to white students and students with disabilities, with non-disabilities, economically disadvantaged, and so on. And then the numbers that you want to take a look at over here, sorry, over here, positive numbers are showing that we are positively closing that, that achievement gap. So this is for English language arts. So as you can see, our economically disadvantaged and our ELL students, they are closing that gap. We don't think so much for our students with disabilities. And the same thing for math, we can look at there as well. Our students, Asian students, yes, the nation mark means like we really are closing that gap, that they have some really significant gap closure. And then our students from more races, they are also closing the gap in a positive way.
Okay, then it goes on to on-track and post-secondary readiness. This is definitely an area of strength for our district. So you can see, I can't get this thing to work here. Maybe not. Where I highlighted.
Oh, are you talking about the, oh, I'm sorry, I thought you were turning.
Oh, there it is. Never mind, I highlighted it in preparation for the laser not working. So really, it is looking at third grade reading score and eighth grade math achievement. So those are the two pieces that are academic related to post-secondary readiness. The other two are graduation rate and attendance rate, which of course have been a strength for us in the past as well. So those are strengths for us as a district. Student engagement, so this is about dropout rate and absenteeism rate, and again, an area of strength for us. You can see that we are 98.7%, 97% with special, or special ed, you know, students with disabilities. So we're doing really, really well in this area as well. And that ties into our district goal. So instead of being okay with hitting 95%, that's why our district goal is set up differently, where we want to stay above our lowest mark essentially. So we don't want to drop below that, we want to, we want to keep that high for, for Grafton. All right, so I'm going to highlight GES for us. If you look at GES, 85.8 was their score, significantly exceeds, it was one of our, it was our only school in that category for this year. The overall rating was up 2.9 points from last year. Student achievement scores were 17% higher than the state combined for ELA and math, but that did decrease from last year's student achievement by 9%. So that was a decrease in student achievement at Grafton Elementary. Although it's still a celebration, they have high student achievement, the challenge area, just like every school has a challenge area, here at GES, it was growth. The combined school growth score was 13.3% lower than last year. So there was a significant drop in, in growth at GES. And it actually dropped below the state by 4.7%. So, so those are some key points of GES. Now the principals are going to come up and talk some highlights about their schools, starting with Kennedy.
Well, we're here to talk about Kennedy Elementary School's report card for the 17, 18 school year. We have some highlights for you, and also some points of improvement that we'd like to focus on as well. For overall score, we are at a 74.6. This was a decrease by 1.4 points from the previous year, but it also is our third consecutive year being in the exceeds expectations category, so we're quite proud of that as a school. Looking at the different categories and priority areas for student achievement, strong achievement within ELA, 19.8% higher than the state average across the board. And the math student achievement was 7.4% higher than the state. However, this did represent a slight decrease of 4.3% compared to the prior year's scores in this area. For our school growth, we actually did see some increases. We increased by 2.9% compared to prior year's report card. It was a point of pride for us. However, it was not enough yet, as the school growth score was below the state's score. And then for our overall closing gap score, again, we did show an increase of 3.8% compared to the prior year report card. However, the score again was below the state's score. Looking at our closing the gap score, the ELA gap score was below the state's score, and the math gap score tied the state's score, which may represent that we're closing the gap faster in math compared to ELA. And with our groups, our, we, for our closing the gaps groups, they're comprised of scores from students from economically disadvantaged backgrounds, and then what's called a supergroup, a combined group of students with disabilities and also English language learners. So we do have some points of improvement that we are looking forward to making, and also some points of pride. We're quite excited about some of the changes that we have undergone for this school year. For example, looking at our new schedule, which defines adequate times of instruction for ELA and mathematics, moving away from specialization and allowing for collaboration time, moving towards the Bridges math curriculum, which is a heavy emphasis on language processing, understanding the concepts behind math, providing teachers with that time to work together and to build. Within our RTI pyramid, we're focusing on all students learning at high levels. That means all students learning essential standards, learning at high school level plus for readiness, and making sure that all students are achieving at least one years of growth within a school year. We recognize that some kids actually have to make more than one year to close that gap. And it's one of our areas of focus this year is providing that sustained time, the teamwork and the collaboration, so that we can see that happen. Something that our teachers are stepping up to play on, we're seeing a level of diligence when it comes to focus lessons and on their teamwork and focusing on the most essential standards. I'm excited, looking forward to the growth of Kennedy in the years to come.
All right, Woodview Elementary. It's the first time in the last three years that I haven't been able to come here and tell you that Woodview significantly exceeds expectations. We just exceed expectations this year, and this has contributed to, as you recall, recently we came and talked about our, our forward exam scores, and it really contributes to the, the growth of our students from third to fourth and fourth to fifth. Although, the one area that our school did see an improvement in from the state report card from last year to this year was in the area of growth. Our students are 3.8% higher than last year in the area of growth. Our, our math scores were higher in the area of growth, although our ELA scores did not grow quite as much, but overall, we did grow, and we're still below the state. So that's definitely an area of focus for us moving forward. Overall student achievement went down slightly, but really, that one area that we focus on and think a lot about, because it, it shows up in two priority areas, is our third grade ELA score. You'll see that it shows up in on-track post-secondary readiness and student achievement, kind of, it's a double dose. We're really excited about what our third grade students are doing in ELA, and we've seen a lot of success with that. As for the areas for growth for 18, 19, a lot of what Craig just talked about and the things that we put in place are really going to help us target some, some standards that we really think are important to help us grow in the, in the area of the forward exam, which will in turn help us grow on the report card. Really, from the school growth perspective, we want to see that growth in ELA increase. And from the area of closing the gaps, we want to see ELA and math increase. Two years ago, when I was able to come here and talk to you about Woodview being at 91.4 and significantly exceeding expectations, we had two subgroups that we were measured on at that point this year, and last year, we were just measured on one subgroup. I was excited to see an increased population at Woodview this year and being, having a bigger school that maybe will get some subgroups, but Rick quickly broke me back on that and said, no, it's a three-year trend on seeing those some groups, subgroups, but really knowing that we have to focus on some Title I goals and supporting our students that come from economically disadvantaged students or families will help us in that area of closing the gaps. So, thank you.
We neighbors, we're on the same campus, like roommates.
John Long Middle School, so I'm here to talk about the middle school. This is going into my third year, we have reached the 80.2, so we're in the 80s now. We've increased for the last two years. As you can see, our overall school growth is 2.9% higher than the state, and that was a big focus of ours two years ago, to how can we improve school growth? We did some altering of schedules and how kids are taking courses and whether they're in grade level classes or interventions. So kids being exposed to all grade level and giving them supplemental supports, we have seen that that has had great benefits. Which also leads us to closing the gaps. We had a big jump there, and we grew 9.1% from the previous year. Again, I'm crediting this to making sure that all of our kids are exposed to grade level curriculum and giving them the proper supports that they need to be able to be successful at that curriculum. We did see an overall student achievement drop by 2.5%. The state dropped 3.5%, but again, we're dropping as well, so we need to attack that, which aligns with actually our district report, district dashboard, and our school goals are all aligning with that, where we're focusing on reading growth, as ELA achievement, you can see, was reduced, this ELA growth by 3.8%. So really making a focus on reading and writing opportunities as part of our 100-day plan that I talked about at the curriculum meeting as well. So we're really excited about that, and then also making sure that we're making sure that students are algebra-ready when they get to high school, and you can see the importance with the new course with algebra support being offered at the high school. So those two things align very well with our school report card and continue to address those needs. And excited, our new schedule this year, I think we're going to even see more positive gains of being able to provide extra support and reteaching to students. Now on to Mr. Mantai, you've only heard from him a couple times.
So looking at the Grafton High School report card, a couple of points to share with you. First and foremost, our graduation rate continues to be a point of pride for us at GHS. So whether it is looking at all of our students or looking in the closing gaps portion of our report card, either way, the graduation rate is a tremendous success for us. Really credit to our, our teachers and, and making sure that all of our students are able to meet the requirements to graduate from Grafton High School. Certainly something that continues to be a point of pride for us. We look at our achievement as well, look at our ELA achievement and our math achievement. We exceed state averages by 17% in ELA, by 19% in math, certainly points to be proud of there as well. We had an overall increase in our state report card of almost three points from the 2016, 2017 school year, so certainly trending in the right direction there. As Kevin had indicated, very consistent with John Long, our overall achievement did decrease 2.1 points overall. The state did decrease 2.9 points overall with that. One area for us to continue to look at by this particular measure, which is really the ACT given to our junior students, is closing the gaps. So we have an all-three supergroup, which consists of our students with disabilities, our economically disadvantaged students, and our ELL students. And, you know, as far as our gaps there, you know, we need to work on closing those gaps, we're below the state average when you look at both ELA and math. Two examples of things that we're doing to try to rectify that, you've already heard about tonight, you go to the math course proposal of providing algebra support with pairing all of our students by taking a grade level algebra course as a freshman and elimination of Algebra B. That's one example of providing access to students to grade level coursework when they enter Grafton High School. The other example would be related to our schedule, by looking at our increased number of intervention periods each week, by doubling that time, really looking at being able to reteach in those mornings by department and really looking at those power standards and making sure our students are achieving those must-learn power standards. So I think those are two things already that we're doing to attack that concern with closing the gaps. Some highlights for Grafton.
Okay, so to close out, how are we using this information? Actually, many of the principals already said a lot of the points on here. Basically, what have we done and continue to do using that assessment data, forward, math, CFAs? CFAs are much more in play now that we have our time, our collaboration time secured at every level across our district. Forward, we've talked with you about how we're using that. We're also using math. Teachers are getting teacher-level data, which also helps them, as well as trend of their own data. And then we're using that to really think about how to intervene with students and how to enrich. Strong focus on which students are at risk of changing their category, their proficiency category in forward, from basic down to below basic, or from proficient down to basic. We want to keep those kids at proficient, and we want to move kids from basic up. So a, a real lens on who are the students and why. We have plans, next step plans, to look more deeply at the forward. We have an ELA committee right now working on curriculum. So with Rick's help, we're going to be looking at some, some data in each category in the exam and take another look at our power standards and see, do our power standards align with what's being tested at the state level, what they deem as power standards? And if not, do we need to reconsider? And then what, what is, what needs to change in our instruction? So all of that, those are next steps as well. Of course, we have our new math curriculum, we have new thinking at the high school level as well with, with math that I'm very excited about. Looking at our power standards with the change in schedule at the, at the high school will be extremely important, and keeping that lens of rigor that we really kicked off in previous 100-day plans, but worked hard with our, our LDC requirement this summer that had an ACT rigor lens to it. And then, closing the gap, what have we done? Providing support within core instruction and in addition to core instruction for all students, ensuring that all of our students have access to grade level standards and support of those standards. You've heard it in Scott's presentation, you've heard Kevin talk about it, you've heard us talk about it at the elementary level. That's that RTI component. Connecting that to our PLC teams and having them really talk in teams about how students are achieving and what essential skills need to be re-taught, and who is the best person to do that work amongst the team members. Really pulling together a K-12 RTI process. Now we have more people, an entire team that has been trained with a real rigorous training that we've kind of spoke about before with PLC and RTI through Solution Tree. with PLC and RTI through Solution Tree, and then addressing our courses at the high school as well. So just continuing to strengthen that. The alignment of all teacher SLOs to our building goals, which then are aligned to our district dashboard and goals, has been a really important shift that I think is going to give us some leverage and make the kinds of progress that we want to see. So, this is an opportunity for the board to ask questions of any of us, not just me. So if you have a question for a particular level or an overall question, we will do our best to answer. I will sit in the hot seat, though.
My question, I think, maybe is for Rick.
Excellent.
For the closing the gaps score, are they, you have to meet the group, I'm looking at, say, John Long, the 2014-2015 out of ELA.
Okay, so you're looking at the actual report card?
So, yeah, is it five years, or you have to have at least three?
Three years or five years.
So will this...
And you have to have 20 students in that group. If you have 19 in one year, you're out.
Right. So, for example, that .886 for 1415, which was the first year, will that, assuming we have above more than 20 students, that number will stay on instead of dropping off?
Correct, correct.
So for the ones that are, so that would be a good thing in that case, right? I mean, keeping a fairly high score. .886 is the highest of those four.
Actually, what you want to have is you want to have a positive slope. So you want to have that, you know, .886 is a good score, and you want to get higher than that.
Yeah. For the ones where we have five years, is it, it's something we could look at and say, just for the district, English learners, 13, 14, is the highest of the five years, so we know that score's dropping off. Gets replaced with anything lower than that, that score is going down.
Correct, correct.
So then those are, you could kind of look ahead there, right, and kind of at least get some idea of what closing the gap is going to look like, assuming the student population groups stay the same?
Yes, yes. You can attempt to extrapolate the slope and take your scores next year and try to recreate that group. And essentially, you look at that final column, and you find either a positive or a negative number. If it's a positive, then the rate of change is actually, we're getting closer to closing that gap. You want to be a negative slope because then you're moving away from the peer group.
Is it, thank you for that, the, the numbers are so small for our district. I mean, we have all these supergroups, right? I mean, how are these even, I know it's probably because DPI says so, but, I mean, how are these even valid statistically, preparing a group of 500-plus students to 24?
Some other questions.
It's not, I mean, it can't possibly be...
Correct, correct. I mean, they pick that number because part of that magic number 21 is in statistics in terms of having some sort of predictability of a group. They also know that you can get large fluctuations if you drop down using 15 or 10 points. And because of our school size, particularly at the elementary school, there were years when we had 22 special ed students, 19, and then 21, and then we couldn't meet that group. Going forward, though, having elementary schools that are going to be close to 500, then looking at that rate of change could be valuable, or more reliable in terms of measuring the quality of the school. And districts our size are in the same boat. I'll be at meetings and see some people complain about the volatility of the numbers because they're so close to that group of 20.
Because that seems to hurt us in a couple of areas that seems really hard from a, not just the, it's not just the number of students, it's basically the massive percentage of white students that we have that are being compared to, right? I mean, if you're not a super-diverse district, you're really now, we have 28 Hispanic students, right?
Right.
I mean, that's, they get the multiplier if they're advanced, or one and a half, or whatever that's, I mean, if they were under that, it would behoove the school to have those really small group relative speaking of students do well. It would be an outsized effect on the overall score of the school.
Right.
Because it's not getting blended away by, there's 200 of them.
Correct, correct.
Seems like we're unfair, I don't want to say unfairly, because everybody's in that camp, but it seems like there are instances where it hurts a lot more than it might help if that small group did that.
Right. But if we could then look at the district, when we go to the district for closing the gaps, where we have five, five or more groups, you know, actually six up there, and then you track over years, how are we doing, so move away from these schools of 300 students, and then look at, you know, well, four, five, five schools together where you're measuring really 1,000 students, because you're measuring the performance of third-to-eighth graders and then the 11th graders to the ACT. You're not measuring 2,100 students on the report card. You're essentially measuring just half of our students. But then, if you start to look at, are we trending up? And if you were to go back and plot our overall score, we're having a steady, every year, having, at the district level, having a higher score. Jeff showed a graph that he went and plotted, and actually, that's the type of thing where you reflect on it, rather than looking at these small details of small subgroups and tremendous volatility, that we overall, as a district, when you're looking at 1,000 students, are steadily growing and improving. That's a takeaway for us to affirm something
Any other questions?
I just have one, and I don't know if it was Craig, Mike, or one of you. Mentioned standards focus that align better with forward exam. Give me some examples of those things. In the high school, we have some examples that were presented, the algebra support and the increase in intervention time. But what are some of those standards focus, things that we're doing next year, things that we look to do that will better align with the forward exam?
So grade-level teachers, last year, has an entire grade level worked on what power standards we believe are really enduring, lasting in this district, and we really decided these are the ones that we're going to focus on and what our students need to know by the end of this grade level. So our hope is, our goals that we set as a district are that 100% of our students will meet that goal, will know that standard. And if we're picking the right standards and we're talking about the right things in instruction, it is inevitably going to impact the forward exam. And if it doesn't, then that tells us we've picked the wrong power standards, and we've looked at these huge, you know, this wide, vast level or grouping of standards, and maybe we selected the wrong ones. But I'm confident that when we hone in on those, we're going to see better results because of it, and our teachers are already feeling better about that in the work that they're doing on a daily basis, rather than looking at all of these standards across the gamut and trying to select the...
So for example, in ELA, key ideas and details, we're scoring really well, but craft and structure, we're not scoring as well. So we need to look at what power standards and where, what grade levels have we powered standards that align to craft and structure kinds of, and common course set up that way. So you can hone into that. And if we haven't powered them, why not? Even though, even when you don't power them, you're still teaching them. You're just not, you're just not assessing them multiple times in multiple ways, okay? So do we need to shift emphasis to better align with where we're seeing our students perform less well, without losing where they're performing well, if that makes sense?
So you're looking at it, in my mind, in the reverse capacity. Where are we scoring not as well as we'd like in the forward exam? How does that align with the power standards that we have?
Yep. Now that we have three years of Forward and we have two years of power standards, now we can do that alignment and take a look at what have our decisions been, and do we still feel that they're the right power standards, essentially?
Okay.
Like Michael said.
As one specific example, in fifth grade, they're focusing heavily on fractions, on manipulating fractions with common denominators, unlike denominators, and being able to add and subtract and multiply devices enough. And we're seeing that this fraction standard is embedded throughout the bridge's curriculum, and it's assessed heavily on the forward exam. And our fifth-grade teachers are setting this goal of students demonstrating mastery of being able to add and subtract fractions of like and unlike denominators, with the hope that in tackling the standard, it's going to make a positive impact on the assessments. For fourth grade, looking at tackling and diving deeply into word problems within math, being able to process what the question is asking, selecting the right algorithm, solve that problem accurately. So it's a sustained focus for the massive standards over the course, entire school year.
All right. Thank you.
And I think one of the, I think, Rick, you, I brought it up here, that forward score look-up that sort of breaks out the standards performance. I think, Craig, you had created this, where it breaks down how students are doing in operations and algebraic thinking, numbers and operations in base ten, numbers and operations for fractions, measurement data in geometry. And then it's color-coded, so if it's really, if they're doing really well, then it's really bright green, and then it goes lower. And then you can look at every kid in that grade level and see, where is it, and there's certain areas that we're just really good all the way down, and there's other areas that we go from bright green to right-away other colors. And so it's, we're able to see some patterns, and that helps teachers be able to say, okay, the student's overall score is this, however, in this area, he or she could be helping in this. And that's what we used time earlier this year, and I think, Michael, now you've done that, or Kevin could use that as well, and Kevin has that as well. And so, you know, so we're trying to look at data also differently. Now that we have enough data to be able to do that, we're able to, you know, we talked a lot about the signal and the noise, and there's all these data points, what are the important data points? So now we're able to narrow in on those data points and focus on that, so the teachers don't feel like, my goodness, all I'm doing is looking at data and I'm not teaching, because it isn't all about just data. It's also about the overall child, and we don't want to forget that. So, you know, but there are certain data points that matter, and we want to focus in on, similar to a power standard that we're looking at for the teacher, but we're also looking at this administratively with our staff.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Yeah, so we're very pleased. I mean, really, I think this is a big celebration. I mean, obviously, you know, we have continuous improvement mindset. We're always trying to get better. There's areas that we want to continue to improve upon. However, I think it's also important that when you have success, you know, we are at significantly exceeds, the first time in our history that we've been at that point. I think Rick had printed this up, or it's an email to us saying, in 1213, we were at 73.5, is where we were in 2012-13. So we've steadily made increases to get to where we are. There's still some areas that we want to work on, but I think it's really important to celebrate the fact that our students, our staff, our parents are partnering with us on a daily basis to be successful. And last Tuesday before break, we provided a breakfast snack for all of our staff, just to thank them for, show them we're thankful for them, but at the same time, also celebrating the insignificantly exceeds, and taking that opportunity to celebrate that is a big part also.
Yeah, and I think the board probably shares that same sentiment. You're in fine air to a large degree at the high end of the spectrum here, and it's, that's remarkable in and of itself and worthy of celebration. But equally, in my mind, remarkable is the commitment to make it better, and the commitment to share the areas that we can improve and make those points better so we can get into even finer air. And I think that is really remarkable, and I thank everyone for their efforts in doing so. Okay, Ozaki Youth Apprentice, 66.3 agreement.
Schmenta?
Yes, yes.
Last month, it was Mr. Adams.
Yeah.
And this month, Tofor hasn't talked yet.
And are you going to talk yet tonight?
No.
All right. So we are a member of Ozaki Youth Apprenticeship Consortium. There is a fee associated with that. Greg Johnson works with our youth apprenticeship program at Grafton High School. He's going to talk to you a little bit about that as well.
I kind of feel like, and then there were none. So, yes, Scott said, I work with the youth apprenticeship program, Ozaki Youth Apprenticeship. I'm our school coordinator for that. I sit on the county board with Carl Hayter as well. So what we do is, we attend monthly meetings, and part of my role is communicating with the co-coordinators, John Duba and John Higgins are those people, coordinate the paperwork between the students and the Ozaki Youth Apprenticeship, and then meet with the students as needed. If there's issues going on with the employer, the student, which hasn't happened yet, but I would be that person that they, I would talk with them as well. So in the packet you received, it says in there, we currently have 22 students who are placed, and we have four students who are waiting placement, and that's the most, I asked Kelly Reek, who does a lot of, helps with this as well, and that's the most students we've had in the program in her memory. So it's awesome. So besides the four who already have their applications in and we are waiting for placement, I have about six, six or seven more students who are also in the process of completing their application. So it's a growing program, and it provides a lot of opportunities for our students. There's one- and two-year apprenticeship programs that will help prepare these students for a lot of different options after high school, including entering the workforce right away, or going into a registered apprenticeship, or helping them enroll in a tech college or a four-year university, and some type of occupational that's related to what they have apprenticeship in. Just so you know, each student, they work in partnership with the employer. They have to be, at their employer, they have a mentor who's identified, who's kind of like their boss, if you will, who also guides them. They have to be in a class at their high school that's related somehow to their apprenticeship that they're taking, or that they're enrolled in. And right now, there is 11 apprenticeship program categories that the state has. We don't have students in all 11, but there's 11 opportunities for them. So just so you know, there's a minimum of 450 hours to complete the one-year apprenticeship program, and then 900 hours are required to complete the two-year program. So the way it works at the high school, some students, they may leave after fifth hour, sixth hour, or seventh hour to get their hours in. A lot of times, it's over the weekend, especially if they're doing a CNA-type of Certified Nursing System program, they might get their hours all done on the weekend as well. So a lot of different ways they can do that. And then, once they meet all the requirements and they're done with the program, they'll receive a certificate of occupational proficiency from the Wisconsin Department of Workforce and Development. So that's just another credential for them to take wherever they're going after high school. And I believe also in the packet of information you received, where our students are currently placed, so you can see they're all over the county, veterinary, that's been a high demand, I guess, in the past couple of years, Cedarburg Veterinary, Best Friends, and so forth. And right now, the manufacturing and the health care seem to be the popular ones for this year. So in a nutshell, that's what it is, but again, if I can just say, it's a great investment. I mean, look, we have, we're almost up to 30 kids, if everyone gets their applications in, who are getting a rewarding opportunity in high school. So we have to have eight students enrolled in order to meet that $4,000 amount that we pay. So we're getting a bargain, I think. So, any questions about youth apprenticeship program?
Just maybe a comment. I mean, our company actually has one of these students, and it is a great experience, you know, for them to come in and learn and work with adults and those types of things. So it is grades, and actually, 15 or 16 years ago, we had our first one student, not from Grafton, but from Ozaki County, and is still with us today. So it's definitely an opportunity for kids. So it's a great program.
Yeah, thank you. I can echo that, too. I've been in school counseling for about 25 years, and I've had students involved in this program for many years, too, who have eventually gone on to work for the company because it's been such a great experience. So it can be.
Absolutely. Thank you. We would entertain a motion to approve the youth apprenticeship agreement as presented. So moved. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have two gift reports to see.
Yes, we ask for the board approval for, one donation is from the Carl Bowman family and two for our fine arts area. It's their black student musician stands for the high school band room produced by the Wagner Corporation. They're valued at $5,645. So, that would be going into our fine arts area as well as the other donation is from Aurora Health. And there is a $2,000 cash charitable contribution which goes towards our Project Lead the Way cutoffs and the things, so I apologize. But it's towards the Project Lead the Way affiliation fee as well as their $500 in-kind supplies. So, they allow us to purchase in full and then they're donating in-kind $500 towards that. So, we would ask the board to approve those two donations.
Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion of the second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? And it passes with many thanks and appreciation for the gifts that have been made, as always.
And we will send a thank you letter on behalf of the board and the district to both of these.
Construction updates, item K.
Mr. Schofield is up here.
So, to start off with, at the elementary schools, starting tonight through next week, we have exposed chilled water piping in all of the classrooms that will be encapsulated and taken care of. In addition, three sinks and countertops in the next two weeks at Kennedy will be also installed. So, the additional locker rooms at both elementary schools scheduled to be installed the third week of December for those items at the elementary schools. Also, some issues with, we are continuing to balance and commission HVAC systems. So, we do have almost daily complaints on either too hot, too cold. So, those issues I am working with, with the contractors on a daily basis. At the high school, just to inform everybody that the remaining parking lots are going to be put off until next spring. And the reason is because once you drop below 40 degrees, contractors will not warranty their work anymore. So, we selected, the administration selected to put off that work until springtime. However, with that said, all of the, as you can see, large fill zones, they will be graded and seeded. And that includes west of the stadium that will also be completed this fall.
So, we had, because the high school is short marking spots. So, because, you know, with November becoming much colder than it's typically, instead of investing the couple hundred thousand dollars that is used towards that parking lot and then not having people warranted or having issues in the future, we stopped doing it there. But we still had them put, they'd done half of, like, half of the district office parking lot. They hadn't done the other half yet. So, we had them finish that and put the first coat down so that, starting today, high school staff came down and are parking in our lot, which then allows students who have been waiting on, waiting to come into the high school lot. And Mike Kalina has worked with Scott on, with those students and so forth. So, we do only have one coat down. So, there, it'll be a plowing, you know, they have to be careful because it doesn't come all the way to the curbing. So, we're trying not to wreck the curbing as we're doing it because that'll be an added cost. But we needed at least get one coat down. So, we had parking there. So, we're only going to plow the area back in the maintenance area so the deliveries can come. But we won't be parking back there. We won't have students parking back there. We'll have the maintenance staff parking back there. But that's it. And we aren't finishing off as you head towards the tennis courts until end of spring. So, that means, you know, it sounds like maybe, probably May is probably when it will be in honesty, is what they're saying, is when the asphalt financing fired up and they can redo that. But it was just a better use of district funds, taxpayer funds, and although not ideal, it's just in the long term, it's going to be the right answer and not have 10, 15 years from now, have problems with the asphalt that isn't meeting our long-range plan, that we haven't budgeted in that way for it. And then we're cutting funds to do something else. So, we've held off, which will create some issues for plowing, but it's going to be better in the long run.
Any questions? All right. Thank you. Board meeting scheduled for December.
So, December currently is scheduled for December 24th. And we were wondering if maybe we would want to switch that date. The 10th, the committees are meeting on the 10th. And so, we were wondering if the 17th administration was looking at the 17th to be a potential board meeting for December?
If you might not have heads? Yes, we'll move to the 17th.
24th?
Yes.
So, then we will make sure that we change that in our calendar and post it accurately and so forth. Excellent. Thank you.
All right. Well, and now we're down to.
Melanie.
Melanie. And Melanie certainly does count, but it is a remarkable meeting. At the end of the day, when you think about successful fall sports, you know, the musical that was absolutely phenomenal. And if you had an opportunity to see it on Saturday night, it was just wonderful and sound. And I, the set was amazing. So, I'm assuming they were able to use the new space and get that set in there. Carl Hayder and his team in the winter tune-ups, the exciting changes in the schedule that are focused on continuous improvement. And then, you know, these new course offerings that are all aimed at increasing rigor or at enhancing or supporting enhanced rigor with the algebra support. I don't know that you could pack more things in that are so beneficial to the district in moving us forward as we did in one meeting tonight. And certainly thanks to the staff, thanks to administration for making that happen. Because I think these are remarkable times and remarkable things for the district. So, thank you. Then I entertain a motion to adjourn and to close session to consider sponsorship negotiations, administrator performance evaluation data, a student request involving social and personal history, and a strategy for crime detection or prevention, all in accordance with Wisconsin State statutes 19.851C, D, E, and F. Do I have such a motion? Second, second. Okay, we have a motion, a second. John?
Yes.
Joe?
Yeah, Karen?
Yes.
Yes.
And yes. Thank you. We're pretty close.